Buddy.
Hey Frank, good to see you.
You too.
Hey Kelly.
You sure it's me?
Hey, good, how's everybody? Kind of missed all you guys.
Wrong spot.
What's that? Oh, it's not too bad on today.
Close though.
You should tell me I was in the wrong.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Frank. And I didn't give it much love, but then I saw Kelly down there and knew I sat next to her.
Okay evening and welcome to our work session for Monday, February 15th, 2021. This is a joint work session between the Cedar Falls City Council and the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission and is being held in accordance with the provisions of the Iowa Public Information Board for electronic meetings during the COVID pandemic. This is a hybrid meeting, it's great to welcome council back into the chambers and staff and to our commission members who all are attending remotely. So, thank you again for joining us tonight. And our items, single item for the agenda tonight is a joint work session to discuss the future roles, responsibilities, and city council expectations for the Human Rights Commission. We have 70 minutes allotted for this discussion and this is a continuation of a work session that we held on November 16th, 2020, at which we had some initial conversation and discussion and now this will add to that. So, with that said, welcome to our commissioners and would like to especially recognize Willie Barney, who is the new Chair of the Human Rights Commission, also Susan Langdon, who is the Vice Chair of the Commission now. So with that, do you have any opening remarks, Mr. Barney?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for providing us the opportunity to connect with him. I appreciate your willingness to brave the winter cold out there and allow us to sit here at home in our warm environments here. But again, thank you for having us. Hopefully there'll be an opportunity for us to connect and grow a little bit closer in our work ahead of us. Susan, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nope, I think you said it.
Okay, thank you. So, on your council, or the packet that was provided, I had a letter, draft memorandum, that was the creation of Steering Task Force for the Cedar Falls Human Rights Commission. And just to start off our meeting, I would like to go over what that charge would be and then just open it for discussion for council and for the Human Rights Commissioners. If there are concerns or ideas or changes before this goes into final, I would love to have your input. So, if there's no objection, I'll move into that first and we'll certainly reserve quite a bit of time for other topics for tonight as well. So, with that, it's the first time I've ever tried the clicker here, so we'll go into the presentation. Here we are. Okay, so with that, the Steering Task Force, I'm just going to walk through with slides what the paragraphs were and the major parts of this draft document. And I will be taking notes. It's not a voting situation tonight, since we're just in a work session, but certainly if you have ideas or we can come to consensus on changes that you'd like, this would be a great time to entertain those. There we are. Okay, so the purpose, one of the most important parts of the document is that number one, it says, "This memorandum creates a task force to provide direction to the Human Rights Commission in response to the long-term challenges with, long-term racial challenges within Cedar Falls. This memo provides the task force's scope of work, member selection process, and a timeline for completion." So, with that language, we are, based on the council's referral, looking through that doc, or the video from our last meeting, it was specifically geared toward the Human Rights Commission, that you were looking to provide a direction to that, or the council's looking to provide direction to that body. So, there is the possibility of expanding that outward, so that it's not just direction to the Human Rights Commission, but to actually be a broader direction for changes within the city. And I didn't want to expand that scope without a discussion of that first. So, not necessarily looking, we wouldn't intend to have a motion for this, but would like to discuss the idea of this being a document focused into direction for the commission itself, or a much broader series of recommendations, especially for the city and potentially for you and I, for the school district, things like that. So I'll open the floor and feel free just to chime in. I'll call on names if it gets a little bit, people jumping in at once, but otherwise, free flow of discussion here.
Well Mayor, I guess I'll start with some thoughts. Can you hear me okay?
Certainly, yep.
Certainly, in my mind, one of our, this study group or this task force, I would really like to see work with the Human Rights Commission in better defining from their perspective what their role is, what they thought their role has been and maybe haven't had a chance to do it, but number one, help solidify their actual function within the community. I think I'll be the first on the council to take some responsibility for probably not being as attentive to the role of the Human Rights Commission over the years. And obviously, that's been a mistake of ours, we need to be more engaged. So I want, I want the end result of this to be the Human Rights Commission have a much clearer understanding of what our expectations are, but in the process, I want us to learn from the people doing the work, the Human Rights Commission, where the city, what the city needs to do in turn. I don't want this to be all about telling you guys, telling the Human Rights Commission what to do, we need to learn from you and then be supportive of that. I think there were, you've had experiences where you've tried to do some things and perhaps we as a council haven't been, not that we haven't been supportive, we just not have, have not been engaged. And I think part of what we really need to do is to better understand your role, number one, but what is our role in supporting and helping lead that charge? So, to me, it's yes, number one, redefining the role of the Human Rights Commission, but in a larger way, kind of setting the direction for the overall city as far as being more inclusive. That's kind of where I was seeing this headed, so.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Dara. Other thoughts? Don't be shy.
You know, as I have had.
Sorry.
I'm getting a lot of feedback, I can't tell if someone's talking or not talking, so.
Yeah, and we can hear you fine, Ms. Runney.
All right. The concern for me, or I guess not the concern, when I heard about the task force, it was something that excited me. One of the pieces that I really was looking forward to was the bigger picture conversation. I really think that the city has a huge opportunity to evaluate its role in addressing equity and injustice and having the opportunity to eliminate it. We've known for years upon years, and I'm going to use the phrase generations upon generations, in which Cedar Falls, for those of us in the black and brown communities, there's been belief and feelings and statements that Cedar Falls was not a very welcoming community. And I think that there's been enough, you know, with the report that came out and the ancillary conversations, there's a great opportunity to begin addressing that. I think the Human Rights Commission becomes a secondary role in kind of this work because what is defined as the bigger work for the whole community, then the Human Rights Commission is a role to support that bigger work. I don't believe that we set out with a task force to say, hey, what's the work of the Human Rights Commission if we haven't first figured out what's the work of the city of Cedar Falls to determine the next steps going forward. The Human Rights Commission, the Housing Commission, the Police Department, the Fire, well, the Combined Public Safety Department, all those things are all reflective of the work that the governance defines for the whole city of Cedar Falls, and the Human Rights Commission is just one of those entities that will have some work once the city defines what is necessary for it to move forward.
So did I understand right, Mr. Barney, that with the items that you, or the groups you had mentioned, those are all city entities? So, could it be expanded to say, you know, provide direction to not Human Rights Commission, but provide direction to the city? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, and I think for all entities with, yep.
Yeah, what about, what about saying to provide direction to the city, including boards and commissions? Because then it doesn't just limit it to the human rights, like you said, it could be the, you know, any of them, including council. We could put council and boards and commissions. So, I would be open for amending it to be broader.
Councilman Dunn, good.
I just wrote some notes down yesterday, so it might kind of feel like I'm rambling. So one quote that I saw yesterday, because I really, I know I say it all the time, but I feel like education and having places for people to freely discuss things, I feel like sometimes, you know, big thinking is great, but sometimes the biggest change can happen with simple discussion and listening, like truly hearing people. So, one of the things I wrote down yesterday was a quote, it says, "I never learn when I feel like I am being taught a lesson." And I feel like that's a great quote overall, but in this case, if we're going to truly reach everyone, I think that's a great approach. So, my feelings, I wrote down, we must collaborate with our neighbor, this is the city of Waterloo, in some way. They are our friends and neighbors, they work and play here, their voice matters. Education environment and environments where we can gather together, kind of like what I just said, I feel like it's good to have those opportunities. I did not come from a diverse background, I came from rural Iowa. When I came to Cedar Falls, I felt like Cedar Falls was a diverse place, because it's much more diverse than where I came from. After 25 years of living here, I realize that's not necessarily the case. But some of the best opportunities I've had to grow as a person and learn is, has come from having opportunities to have people who are friends that don't look like me or didn't grow up like me, but they've taken the time to talk to me and maybe, you know, educate me or just tell me their experiences in life. And I feel like overall, that's helped me to become, to grow and become a better, more open-minded person. I feel like we must show our history of this town. Why does our city look totally different than the city that is right next door to us? And there's reasons for that, that we need to recognize. We need to admit that there was wrong done in the past and that it should never happen again. We need to listen to current commission members and the needs that they see, including, it's been said over and over again, just in the short time that I've been in council, that these folks who are volunteers are giving time that is, you know, part-time job hours. And so I know that we have the HR person now, and I think that's great, but we've been told by more than one commissioner that's left, that they are needing more staff support in order to actually do the work that we need to have done. Okay, so people living, playing, working, visiting, or driving through Cedar Falls should not feel hate or discrimination based on their race, religion, sexual orientation, and gender identity. We should focus on being inclusive and welcoming to all people. And then, the article that rates us as the worst place to live for a black person, it talks over and over about the black unemployment rate in Waterloo, Cedar Falls. How are we going to fix that? What can we do to help fix that problem? Those are my notes.
Thank you, other thoughts?
I just have a kind of a challenging question to the council, as someone who's really new to the commission. I guess I have wondered if part of, as, and I'm not sure, I didn't see the name, I'm thinking it was Councilman Miller spoke, is that right?
Councilwoman Dunn just spoke.
The council has not been as actively involved as it might have been in terms of taking a leadership role. My question really is, is the council as a whole on board with the issues of equity, social justice, economic justice inclusion? Or is it okay until we start to feel uncomfortable? Because to do this well, people are going to feel uncomfortable, and your constituents may get uncomfortable with the things that the commission might end up doing. So, I think we have to be really clear that race is a very difficult issue in this country to talk about, and there could be repercussions and some happiness from Cedar Falls citizens, unfortunately, if the commission becomes more active and present and visible than it has been for the past 30 years that I've lived here. I've been there once, not that long, but I've not noticed a lot, just haven't had any complaints to report. So, it's interesting time to read about and to look at that. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll note that the creation, or the referral to create this, did have unanimous approval from city council in the last meeting. Other thoughts on having this task force be geared to the city, recommendations for the city versus just to the Human Rights Commission? Councilmember Miller, please.
I think that was a fantastic question and gets to the heart of how hard this conversation is. I don't think we as a council can bind any future council to a set course, but I think the steps we're taking can help solidify a direction. I don't know that we're 100% all in agreement on what this looks like moving forward, and I don't know that that will ever be the case, which you want with a diverse council to a certain degree. Now, when you're, I think when you know, when you get into the heart of talking about race, it's super hard conversation for people to have and to be honest about. And I think we're all going to struggle with that, I mean, as we move through this, or at least some of us will. At least for myself, I'm on board with this 100%. I think we have to look at this to Councilmember Dunn's point, and I mentioned this at the last meeting that we had, the history of Cedar Falls, I think, is going to lend it's so much information to all of us as to how we got here. And in the same breath, it should offer some guidance on how to move forward, I think. So, or at least offer some steps. I do like the idea of making this a broader, having the task force have a broader sense of direction to try and define this for the city versus just the human rights, because I was struggling with what exactly the goal is. I mean, these folks are meeting on their own time for the Human Rights Commission, and then two of them, per se, are also going to participate in this, so it's a lot of meetings, right? And everybody's volunteering their time. So, I think having a broader goal for the task force, I think that's the right direction.
Okay, would anyone disagree with that?
No. Real quick, I'll be very brief. I'm on board. I want to support not only the HRC, but the goal towards equity in Cedar Falls for all races and colors and religions and everything. I think making the task force broader is great, because what we can have from the task force then is a report on what the city can do, what can we take action on? And that's, that's where it gets to the next step. And that's what I hope comes out of this task force, is that we get a report that here's what the council can do, here's what city staff can do, here's what HRC can do, here's what we can do on other commissions. And through that report, we take action. So, I'm on board 100%, I agree with Councilmember Miller. We can't bind other future councils, but I think with the unanimous passage of this task force and support that Councilmember Dara referred, I think we're all on board.
Okay, and then from Human Rights Commission, any concerns or objections to having this be a task force which provides direction to the city government rather than just Human Rights Commission?
I would share just a, I kind of agree with what Willie talked about, making it bigger when we first talked about this task force too. It wasn't just to tell us what to do, what the Human Rights Commission could do, because we're not going to wait until the task force gets done and make recommendations. And we're moving on right now and doing some things and we'll continue to do that. But, you know, I think like, it's a bigger thing than just us seven people on the Human Rights Commission as well. And I would just echo what Kelly said about staff, I mean, you know, we've got Krieger and we had Colleen, but it's a big issue. And the time and energy, I know that Nicole Jones on the issue and chair, you know, it's a lot of work. I would echo that, what Kelly said, that to consider, you know, maybe more of a staff person just for HRC and more time allotted, because just knowing how much time it can take, it's a big, it's more than maybe what people realize.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Langdon. Well, seeing that we have a consensus or a sense to move forward on that, I'll go to the next slide here. So, the charge.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Dave had his hand up here, and I don't know if he can unmute or what the deal is, but.
Yeah, but before we move on, I have a question, and it may come up later in the conversation. And that is, while this task force is doing this big picture work for the whole community, and the Human Rights Commission is going to be doing its work, I would appreciate some guidance from the commissioner. I understand the investigative elements have been taken away, there's been a lot of transition and a lot of turmoil, so we're talking about education and advocacy and outreach at this point. In order to do that work, it would help a great deal if the city was very intentional, as I've heard so far, about we recognize the reality of racism in particular in our community, and we want to address that openly and honestly, and not just racism, but all forms of discrimination. And so, that would give license to the Human Rights Commission. In his letter in response to the commissioners who left, the mayor used the word autonomy several times. I think having that autonomy is going to help us float some ideas to the committee, to the council, and say, let's be intentional about this. Why can't the city council at every one of its meetings take 10 minutes to watch the YouTube video clip of uncomfortable conversations with a black man? As a council, come up with a question, a comment, and an idea. And when everyone in the city at every level shows that kind of intentionality, we can do some good things. Because we got some advocacy work in front of us right now, I would love to see us, I'll just go ahead and say this while I'm talking, Cedar Falls and Waterloo and our mayors ought to join together in a letter in support of the use of the 1619 project as a supplement to our education. The truth, the truth is not a problem. So, the legislation that would seek to ban it, people in the Cedar Valley need to speak up against that legislation, because Nicole Jones is doing the right thing, not the wrong thing.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And yeah, we would want to discuss that.
I just need some direction on where we go from here.
So that would be part of an address, hopefully we can cover that further tonight after we work through the task force, but certainly understanding that short-term responsibility or what the commission should be working on now through its committees is going to be an important part of your work going forward. So I appreciate you bringing that up. If we can go back to the slide. So, task force charge, I have listed as, from some of the comments at the referral, using that 24/7 Wall Street report and similar resources as a foundation, so that we can build a common understanding of the challenges of diversity and racial equity. So that would be some of those, the items in the Wall Street report talked about income gaps in our community between black and white people, homeownership and, or employment concerns. So with that, I mean, that's not the only aspect, there are certainly other components, but it seems that the 24/7 Wall Street report would make a good launchpad for us for that discussion. So any concerns about using 24/7 as our springboard? And if there's no concerns, we'll move forward, but just comment if you do have a concern about that. Okay, so that sounds like it's all right. And then the second part of that statement was, "The task force shall identify problems, concerns, and reasons the community currently ranks as one of the worst places for black Americans to live, in order to provide guidance and direction to not just the Human Rights Commission now, but to the city." So I'll make that change. Any other thoughts or anything that needs to be? Any other thoughts or anything that needs to be added in your mind to this charge?
Nothing necessarily to be added, but this was the pawn was the conversation earlier of recognizing there are some additional areas. Many times when you look at the reports that identify the state of Iowa as one of the worst states in the country, the things that they're looking at are unemployment rates, they're looking at incarceration rates, which for us, obviously, not having a prison here, but we do have access to a jail, and we do know that in order to work your way through that system, that involves law enforcement and those kind of things. So looking at that. It also looks at graduation rates, which then impacts kind of the school district, also the university as well. So there's a handful of those things that we know help move into that category. I guess I would—my short and brief statement is, I want us to make sure that we're looking at all those factors and look at overrepresentation or underrepresentation, if that makes sense.
It does. So I can add that in as well. Okay. So with that, any other thoughts on the charge? Okay, so moving on into the deliverables. It's listed, "A final report being sent to the mayor and the city council by this task force to identify specific problems and shortfalls, recommend formal recommendations for follow-on action, and then identifying ongoing efforts needed to promote an inclusive and diverse community." So does that capture the scope of what council wants to see and what HRC is hoping to provide or through this task force? Okay, I'm hearing none, so I take it that's okay. So that's the deliverables part. The next part is one certainly open for some good discussion here. Because this task force needs to be representative of the community, I'm leery about doing appointments just on my own and saying, these people should be in this group. So what—how I'd like to see this is to have two city council members as—and two Human Rights Commission members as the initial members, and to select those, have those set very soon, hopefully by the end of this week. So identify the two council members who are going to be part of it, notionally as the chair and the vice chair, and then two Human Rights Commission members who will be self-selected by your group. So, Mr. Barney, I would expect that you would be able to provide two names of who would want to volunteer for that effort, and that'll be our first four. So any concerns about taking that approach? And then the second part is when it comes to the full membership, we would have—excuse me, pressed that numbers wrong. So the additional membership, we were looking to have as—check my math—eight to ten additional members, with preference to those who work and reside in Cedar Falls, but that's up to the group to decide if that's how you want to go. Would you have concerns or any questions about a preference for Cedar Falls? Do you think that we should take that out? Or—because it's not a requirement to keep it in.
The way I read it was, you put—or when it was wrote, it says, "work or live."
Right. Work or—I'm sorry, yeah. So work or live in Cedar Falls would be the preference.
Right. I mean, I feel like—I mean, there are folks who live not in Cedar Falls, who work here, like live in Waterloo, or—I just feel like it's, in my opinion, so important to have that representation. I like how—I didn't take it that it wasn't an opportunity to possibly have somebody who didn't live in this city on that commission, the way it was worded.
So with those additional members, each would be a voting member except for the chair. The chair would be non-voting and would be the presiding official of those meetings and just keeping it running. That's worked well in the past with our boards and commit—or our task forces, so I'd like to do that again here. So with that full membership, they'd be recruited and selected by the initial members. So those four initial people who were on the commission would then find the rest of the group and would be the ones responsible for saying, what voices do we need at the table, and what would be the most impactful membership to take the city where it needs to go. So I think that in order to have that as like elected officials as the accountable party, I still would retain the appointment authority, the official appointment authority, but I would go with what the commission decides. I can't think of a reason why I wouldn't, but that still, we want to have that final accountability at the elected level. So the note in the document says, "Members should ideally be community leaders and decision-makers with the authority and perspective to enact change within their organizations." But it's just a should, so again, leaving it to the group to decide who's the important voices at that table. And even if somebody's not on the membership, I still would expect that they would be called in as stakeholders to provide the input and feedback as well. And that membership could include reps from UNI, Grow Cedar Valley, NAACP, Housing Commission, and others, but again, those are just suggestions, and I'll leave that to the wisdom of the task force itself to make that decision. So that's—it's—those are some big things. Thoughts, concerns, other ideas? Okay.
I believe Terry has something to say.
Terry, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, thank you. With the thought of working or living in Cedar Falls, like with myself, where I reside, my children would go to Cedar Falls schools. I work in Waterloo, and I have a Waterloo address, but my children would go to Cedar Falls schools. So that is something that I would like to consider as well. Thank you.
Okay. And this—it doesn't necessarily give preference. If there's two people, one that has those attributes and one that doesn't, it doesn't automatically weigh. So I think that we're still okay. I appreciate the school part, the school connection as well. So I think that that can be the—one of the considerations of the group to decide So on to the next. Any final thoughts on full membership and how that would—those would be selected? So in addition, we would have several staff liaisons assigned to the group who would be non-voting, but would be for support and insight and background. That would be Director Rodenbeck, Attorney Rogers, Ms. Babcock, and Police Chief Birdy. So any thoughts of additional people who really ought to be at that table constantly and not just brought in as needed? Okay. So for a budget, we don't have an established budget for this task force, but if there are requests for funding for materials, travel, education, or invited speakers, or other expenses, certainly we'd welcome the task force to bring that to me for funding. We will—if it's useful for the success of the organization, we'll find the funds Okay. And then in the schedule, one aspect of it, since we talked about how everybody here is a volunteer who's going to be part of this, is it wouldn't be possible to have three, four-hour media—or, you know, three and four-hour meetings per night. So we have a time budget set of 90 minutes per meeting per day for the number of days that are required. And I had listed in here—or we had put in a draft of meetings being held on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM. But then it also says, "Unless the task force determines a different schedule or location is more amenable to the participants." Since we don't know who's going to be part of this group, we'll leave that in the task force's care to decide when the best time is to meet for everyone. So any concerns or thoughts on that? Okay. Oops. Okay. And then the last one was—or second to last is public participation. And this is a very important one, because with this group, similar to we saw for the firefighter task force, it wasn't specifically geared for public comment and public participation, but some insights did come from the public that were very helpful in the deliberations. So I'm going to leave the public commenting part to the task force chair's discretion on when it's appropriate, how much participation, or if there's going to be time limits per speaker, things like that. I'll leave that up to the chair. And just as a note, for open meetings, the public can always observe those meetings and record them. And if anybody from the public wants to speak, or they have a specific concern about a topic, and they want to get their story across, I would invite them to ask to be a featured speaker in one of the meetings, so that we can set aside a time for them. If they have materials they want to present, we can have that set for them as well. So somebody who's just a public participant may actually be a stakeholder, and we need to have their story in and give them special time for that. So I'll again leave that to the task force chair's discretion on how to do that. And then the last slide I've got is for open meetings and open records. These would be considered open meetings under the Iowa law, so need 24 hours advance notice. The agendas for each meeting would be posted publicly. So the task force would talk about specific topics on given days, and probably would want to set that calendar out pretty well in advance for what they want to talk about. Public access, whenever the majority of members are meeting, public needs to have the ability to view that. And then open records law applies. So if there's FOIA requests or information that's needed, just appreciate that those would fall under the open meetings—or excuse me, open records law. So general discussion. Any comments before moving this forward from draft into final and selecting the members? Any desired changes, recommendations, insight, wisdom?
I guess I'd have a question about what we see the role of city staff in these meetings. Man, just keep an eye on the rest of us, or do they have a role?
Well, there's going to be information that's required from staff. Like, how do processes work? What's data that's available that we can use for this? So I would expect staff to be at the task force's disposal to provide that information. And for Mr. Gaines, do you have any other thoughts on that of how you'd expect them to be involved in this?
I think, Mayor, it'd be very similar to any of the other boards and commissions. They're there as liaisons to get information, to help provide that information, to give legal advice, for instance, on open meeting laws, or how they're conducting their business, or just providing reports and those type of things.
Keeping an accurate record, I think, is important. Is there an expectation that there'll be someone other than a task force member that keeps minutes and that kind of thing?
Yes. We're going to have a dedicated person there that will actually take minutes and keep track of those, and hopefully, all of those minutes would go in the final report that would be submitted to the mayor and council.
I think it's really important that as this group does its work, that we are clearly communicating with the public what's going on as it's going on. And as we've seen lately, there's a lot of—it's easy to get misinformation out there, and I want to make sure that the public recognizes that this is a good faith effort to try to do the right thing. And I think the more we can have a clear summary of the discussion and action steps will be—would help to move the thing forward. So I'm glad to know that that's going to be a part of it.
Excellent. Dr. Rodenbeck?
No, I was just going to say what Councilmember Dara covered, that obviously, staff would provide during the minutes and post and make sure the agendas got posted, but then also if there's anything we wanted to have our communication specialists get out about the task force, then we can sure relay that on to her as well.
And then one big last question is the deliverable date. So it was floated out as December 10th as the need-by date for council to receive that in order to have it be taken in during this council group before any changeouts for elections. So would anyone want to float a different date or provide a rationale for maybe moving it forward into earlier in the fall, or, you know, since we're looking at election times too? I'm certainly not wedded to December 10th, but—
It just depends on, are we just going to be filing and receiving the task force information in final report? Or if so, then it seems like December 10th would be okay. If we need to make action with the current council, then December 10th is probably too late, because we wouldn't have time to flesh out and talk about what actions we could actually take. So what's the intention of the report on the 10th?
So my understanding of the report was, it would have—it would have detailed information, and maybe those reports, like it would be sub-reports, because it's a pretty big topic. So maybe there's a housing report that sub-report that comes out sooner, and action can be taken on that. So it's not that you have to wait for this entire end package to be delivered. It could be, here's a section that's ready for receive and file, or even approval for action. Perhaps there's recommendations in it. So again, we're taking this as a new thing, so we can basically run it how we want to. But I think if we push it anything past December 10th, it makes it more difficult to potentially enact. So if the council would want to see parts of the report finished sooner, like if there's a section for housing, then deals with the Housing Commission, and you'd want to make changes earlier, we could certainly provide additional guidance to this task force to say, we want to see the housing report by September 1st, or something like that, just so we can start making action as needed. And maybe there's a more difficult component that needs additional time. Yes, Councilman Miller, please.
I think it's probably worthwhile, and I think it's a moving target, that date, per se, but if there are action items that this council or the next council ends up needing to vote on, we're going to want that in goal setting for a conversation there. So don't you set that date in September and try and shoot for that date with an understanding that if the task force needs to continue or wants to continue, they can? But maybe set a date in September and see if you can't hit that target, and if not, then, I mean, I think you want to leave it open to a certain degree.
Also, yeah, I actually—I agree with Councilmember Miller. Talking about stuff at goal setting would be fantastic, so getting it out before goal setting would be good. But is goal setting, and maybe staff can answer this, due to the fact that it's an election year, is goal setting going to be set in stone in November, or are we going to shoot for a December one with the thought that there may be runoffs? I mean, not to throw another kink in the plan, but do we have an idea yet?
So typically, just because of the budget cycle, typically, we try to get those in or at least began and begin the goal-setting sessions in November. And we will typically wait till after that first election cycle. And as there's a runoff, we've invited both of the candidates to come in into the future or into future dates for those to look at that. But if we wait all the way until December, it really gets difficult and starts to—it's tight for the budget.
Okay. Well, then maybe we shoot for October? I don't know if that's too late, the beginning of October. That gives them a little extra time for September, but it still gives us enough time to get it in for goal setting?
So maybe right around October 1st? Would that be—okay. And that certainly would have, yeah, goal-setting requirement. So we will change that to October 1st.
Well, I was just going to say, I also agree with what Councilmember Miller said about.
It should be flexible, too. If they feel like they're getting some outstanding work and they want to continue, is there a way we could say, a report due by October 1st, but if they wish to continue, they could continue? Or leave it kind of open-ended?
That's kind of what I was going to—
And yeah, so just be request and extension, then?
That there may not be an end date to this group. I mean, if some good things are coming out of it, it might be an ongoing—I mean, I wouldn't want to say that there's going to be an end to it necessarily. I mean, it could be something that every year, there's a different group of people, but we're continuing to focus on topics of equity and civil rights and that kind of thing forever, you know? Obviously, the Human Rights Commission has a set of responsibilities, but I think the community—this community should have ongoing conversations— community, this community should have ongoing conversations around these issues. So I think for purposes of this task force, having a drop-dead date, but doesn't mean that continuation of this kind of discussion couldn't be an outcome as well.
Okay. Yeah, typically, task forces end when the final report is delivered, but we could immediately spin up another task force for the next topic. Other thoughts on that? Okay, well, that's all I had for this. Yes, Councilmember Miller?
If I may, I was hoping to talk with the commission. We're kind of at a starting point here, and I, council took the step to take investigations off your plate and hand those over to the state. And I've heard a little bit of some pushback in regards to that. So I kind of want to hear from you folks as to the direction you're headed right now. Is that the direction you guys think that you should be on? Or is there something we need to hear, or something we can do as a council? That, like I said, I feel like we're at step one here, and as far as this council's understanding in a lot of this stuff, so, or at least for myself. So I guess looking for some guidance from you guys as to, if you feel, is everybody on board with the direction the Human Rights Commission is headed? Or are there things we need to look at right now? I just would like us to have a fresh start here and make sure we're all on the same page.
And just for our time budget, we would look at ending at 6:20 to start up our next meeting. So I think it's probably appropriate to take the rest of the time for this, if necessary, for this topic. So, open floor.
Terry?
Some different things that we have done in the past, those of us who do not have legal backgrounds, or things like that, to do the investigations, we need training. And with that training comes an expanded budget of $1,500. This doesn't seem to go a very far way for those types of assistance and training and that, that we may need. So my thought is an expanded budget and more training, so that we feel comfortable that we are taking care of the steps that we need to take care of, and also be helping our citizens of Cedar Falls to file complaints, or just an avenue of giving direction. Thank you.
Terry, can I clarify, though? So you're saying to get the training to help people file claims, correct?
Yes.
You're not saying to do the investigation again?
Just a clarification for those of us that served before, personally, my concern was the lack of training to make sure that I was asking the correct questions, following the correct procedures, and things like that, from persons that have that knowledge, to make sure that we are serving our citizens to the best of our ability.
Thank you. And I wanted to clarify that, because, you know, the direction that we took, and it's been in the process for the last probably four or five years, of not doing the investigation. But I think when we did a little bit of history around the whole state, that Cedar Falls was the only volunteer commission that was doing investigations. And it does take a lot of training. And, you know, we also previously have had two attorneys on our commission, who was very helpful, because we're not attorneys, and I know we have the Cedar Falls attorney look at the reports when we were done with them, but, you know, it's a big deal to be doing those investigations. Investigations, you want somebody who is totally trained, and has the knowledge of the, you know, the laws and the updated laws and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I've done quite a few investigations in my time, but it's still, it's a big ask, and it takes a lot of time. And what, and at first, when they, I remember at a meeting when they first brought it up, like I said, probably five years ago, that we weren't going to do the investigations, or maybe not to think about it. And I was very against that, because I thought that was very important for the commission to do that, and it was one of our main focuses. But then, again, talking about, at that time, the ICRC was dealing with claims, and they were doing a really good job of getting them in and taking care of them, and things like that. And then through many more discussions throughout the commission, and talking about, you know, our goal could be better and help people, you know, fill out the forms, make sure that they fill out correctly, and they understand what's going on. And we do have, you know, we have been working with somebody in that capacity right now. I'm not quite sure where, we have been trying to help somebody to do that. So we just need more training on helping people to do that. And then getting our word out, again, that we're here and available to do that.
Um, I...
Oh, go ahead.
...to do investigations. I'm a believer in expertise, in the value of expertise, doing things right and doing things well. And so, to free that individual commission members might be involved in investigations, I do think training would be essential, and very high-quality, intensive. These are very critical issues, and they have ramifications for people's lives. My only concern with doing investigations is that it might extract energies from working on behalf of the whole community, and doing things that address the needs of the community broadly, in terms of race and diversity, inclusion, equity. It's a question of kind of all of the focus, and who needs the attention, maybe if we spent more time working on the community, issues of individual events might become less... I didn't know if they're frequent, it doesn't sound like they were frequent, from the comments that I had read in the paper, but even one is many, so...
Councilmember Harding?
I had a chance to talk a little bit with Nicole, and from what she was explaining to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, the commission has really not only stepped into an education and outreach and advocacy group, but a supportive role of helping the file the claims, and with the ICRC. And so, to Councilmember Miller's point, if there's something we can do, which it seemed like the budget popped up, is there a way that the commission could possibly provide, if they need a higher budget, get us, what do you need? If you want more training to help support and help people file claims, I think we would all be on board with helping you get that. So maybe a request that I'm asking is for some sort of formal thing presented to council with, here's what kind of budget we feel we could utilize, and what could make us take the next step? So something along those lines, possible to get from the commission?
Mr. Barney, I think that'd be for you, as the chair. What do you think about that?
Well, I was going to actually let Susan answer, because she's, what I was thinking is that budget has been a very, well, actually Spencer, that budget's been a very weird thing over the years, where we have just kind of said, eh, $1,000, but the long story was that $1,000 was always based on a lack of, you just don't know what, when a case comes, that case can hit your budget fairly significantly, you'd be talking five to six to seven, $8,000. If you do no cases, and you just want to do a handful of educational things here and there, and you want to sponsor a banquet here, or a table at something there, we could be talking about $1,000, $2,000. That budget conversation has been a weird one for us over the years, and that's why I said I'd like Spencer and Susan to kind of give their two cents about that budget. But I can tell you, it's been a real odd conversation over the years.
Spencer, do you want to talk first?
Yeah, I can do that. Even though we had a shared $1,500 budget, it hasn't been a hindrance in getting our job done. If we needed some extra money, we would go to our liaison, and then she would talk to the appropriate person in the city, and it was always granted. So we've never been hindered by that $1,500 budget.
That's good to know. What about...
And Terry, when you were talking about the $1,500 training, what was that?
Yeah, I guess that was the second part.
I'm sorry, could you...
What about the training with the...
Could you repeat that question? When you talked about the training for $1,500?
I was talking about our $1,500 budget, like Willie was explaining, that some things, conflict of interest, or giving this person involved, or that person involved, legal involved, that that's going to eat up our money very, very quickly of what we have in our budget. So that was the comment of that. And I really think that Dave has something that he really would like to interject, please?
If I can speak to the original question of what can the city council do to help us? Right now, it sounds like this Human Rights Commission is starting anew, because we have so much turnover, so many new people. So we're going to have to take some time to figure out our budgets, figure out our needs. There is, however, one unsettled one, that I think we need council's help with. I went back and did the research through the Water Lake area, and read the letter from the former commissioners who resigned, and the mayor's response to that letter. And I found both of those things to be quite helpful. I'd like those shared with all of the new members of the commission. The one unsettled, I did this survey of the community businesses. We need to revisit that question, where is that survey? Have that conversation with Grow Cedar Valley, and settle that issue, so that it's not an unresolved issue that's a hindrance.
Well, and Dave, I'd go back, I think, the first one, going back to the training, is what I wanted to say is, ICRC, ICRC, the Iowa commission, these rights, they provide training for us for free, and we've gotten some training from them before, so different training that we have that might be more, might cost much, but right now, the ICRC training that they provide. My quick answer to the survey was, you know, that, there was a, there was a survey brought to the commissioners, and there was feedback given to it, and then there was, that was the last that we heard. So I don't know what happened to that, from a commissioner's point of view. I think it kind of disappeared, or didn't get fixed, or, because it was just a temporary thing that, or not a temporary, but it was just a, what's the word? They'd had questions on it and asked, nothing ever happened from it, and I don't know where it went.
Yeah. And I'm suggesting we find out where it went. That's my question.
I guess my...
Yeah, that's a data.
I'm confused about...
It's in the cloud.
Let's move to Councilmember Dara, please.
I'm just curious about the survey. Who did the survey?
Andrew was working on it.
I'm sorry, who?
And I think Andrew Morris.
But it wasn't, because I know there was a question about perhaps Grow Cedar Valley did the survey, that, that's not where that came from, was it?
No.
Okay.
No, it was looking to go to them. And it, I believe that there, that's a part of the conversation, that it felt like there was some blockage, or some roadblocks that were put in from, not just Andrew, but the other commissioners. And so I think it's a little difficult, you know, I'm one of the remaining members that obviously signed the letter. There's been a lot of attempts to solicit comments about that letter, and I am one who also believes we need to continue to move forward. I think if the conversation is to revisit the survey, we take a look at it, as David said, we identify what changes were left to be done. I don't believe there were very many, if any, at this juncture. I think it was just getting to go ahead to move forward with the survey, and that part of the concern was that it didn't feel like that piece was happening. I'm in regular communication with Andrew, and a number of other professional things, but it wouldn't take very long to find out what the next step was. But I just, I believe that the communication was that it got dropped on somebody's desk and didn't respond to, so...
But a survey may not...
That's a different dialogue, I think David's right, let's investigate that as a commission, and figure out where our work was at and continue to do.
That could be another outcome of this task force. If there hasn't been a survey, then let's do it now. But there's some confusion about if there was a survey and where it ended up. So it'd be nice to get that figured out.
Terry has something to say?
I would like it to also be known, under previous administration, in regards to the survey and the things that we were being asked to put together and present, that they had to be in a positive light. There couldn't be any negativity in there, or anything to that effect, that it had to be positive. And I think we all know that not everything is going to always be positive. So that was a stumbling block for some of us as well. Thank you.
And to my understanding, the, when I talked of the autonomy earlier, that I want to see the commission have, in my mind, I assisted with getting a final draft of that last year, in the, during our strategic planning session, and some of the, or the HRC members were here for that, sent it back to the commission with my approval, and was looking for the commission to move forward with it. So know that from a city perspective, at least from my view, the commission has the authority to issue out that survey. It's not up to the council or the mayor to give a final approval on it. That's the whole idea of autonomy, and how can the staff liaison support you in getting that out? So I don't expect to see it again. I expect that it's going to be issued. Yes, Dr. Rodenbeck?
I just, you know, I think, I think a lot of people have said this, and I think from a staff perspective, I think what we're looking at, too, is, and everyone keeps using this word, I think it's just a nice, fresh start to do a lot of things. And so I think a lot of things that we want to do is kind of look at them in their new role, see how things go. I know last, after the last joint session, we did talk about a budget in their meeting, and I think, as some mentioned, I think it was, it's still trying to figure that out. I mean, it's hard for them to put a budget together when they're not really even sure what, all their new role, and what all that's going to take. But I think, you know, we understood that and said, well, let's just kind of try things for a while, see how they can go, then we can kind of figure that, some of those things out. So I think that's good, that we're kind of starting fresh and doing that. And I just also want to let council members know that at their last meeting, the Human Rights Commissioners did decide to meet twice a month, at least for the next two or three months, because I think they know they have a lot of work to do, and they want to, you know, put extra time in. So I just want to give kudos to them for volunteering their time, and just knowing they have a lot to do, and so they're trying to meet more frequently to get those done.
Yeah, and this business survey was already an initiative of the Human Rights Commission, so I don't want to see that bumped up to the task force. I want the commission to handle that still. So let's...
Yeah. Real quick, I mentioned this at the last, it was at the last joint meeting with the HRC, and I would welcome you guys to the, you know, of course, we're welcome to watch your meetings, but you're also welcome to present at the beginning. We have a spot...
We have a spot in the council agenda that has a special presentations that I think would be perfect if the, if the HRC has anything to let council know or has an ask or anything. So I guess my final thought would be just feel free, whether it's email or the special presentation spot, to reach out if you feel like you, you need something.
And I think I misspoke earlier. I would expect the committee, the Human Rights Commission, to handle the survey rather than the task force. I think I accidentally said task force. But Human Rights Commission would be doing the survey still. So other thoughts in the five minutes or so we've got remaining tonight? We'll look to have future meetings like this in the near future, but anything we need to cover for tonight?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Miller?
I just want to say thanks to each of you for sitting in the spot. Like we're talking about, the conversations aren't easy. And I think anybody in city government at this point, whether it's on a board or commission or whether it's sitting up here, I think is, the public can be brutal and it's tough to take sometimes. So I want to thank each of you guys for sitting in this and being willing to step into the conversation. One more final question, and I think this is what we're all after, is does, do our citizens have a fair shot at a human rights case at this point? And in your mind, with the process that we have in place, do folks have a fair shot?
You're really cutting out in...
Yeah, we didn't get the question.
Huh.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if our citizens, I think this is ultimately what we're all trying to get to here, do our citizens have a fair shot at a, at a human rights case at this point? Do you have what you need to help folks through that process? And again, I'm just trying to get to the core of all, of this, since we're at a starting point in my mind, let's, I want to make sure that I'm not missing something in my role. Did you get it?
I think there's a couple of things that need to be put in place. The process by which people would be filing a complaint, who's the point of contact? I think we really want to review and take a look at all the literature that's even out there. What's in writing? That's the most important, right? What is in writing and then how can people gain access to it? So I think we need to take a look at what's in writing, how do people gain access to it? And then you can kind of get to that piece. What I love, but I've heard multiple people say tonight, this idea that investigations, the ship has sailed and there's no longer any conversation with it. I love that that conversation is still there, but most importantly to me, I think it's important that we figure out as a commission, hey, if we're going to be involved, what does it look like? How do we support it? Where do we need the training in order to be able to support it? Even if that training is just at a place of being able to sit side by side with somebody and helping them go through the process of filing that complaint, which is what I believe that you're asking, right? Do our, does an individual who has a concern, do they have the, we have the right things in place for that person to begin that process and see that process to the end? And I believe because of some of the hang-ups, phrase, let's just use it, that's been used, the gatekeeper, I think there's some of that cleaning up that we need to figure out what that looks like to ensure there are no obstacles in the way of somebody filing a complaint and seeing that complaint through. Whether we support them in it or whether we refer them on to someone else to do. And I think that's the, that is a great starting point for us to look at what documents are there and making sure the contacts, the phone numbers and all of the different things, so.
Thank you.
And I don't know if anybody else has done that, but I'm just shutting off and hitting mute. So if I'm talking, I have no idea if anybody else is talking, but the feedback is driving me nuts. My brain does not process talking and hearing things pop in as I'm talking, unless I'm arguing with somebody, right?
We heard you just fine. Okay, so with that, we'll set up a time for another session. These are very helpful and productive, and I've heard from both HRC and council members that they enjoy these, find them productive meetings. So we'll plan to have another one similar time and composition in the near future. And next steps would be for this task force to do some of the updates based on what came up tonight. And then I'll be issuing that out later this week. So what I would ask for the Human Rights Commission is if you can provide me with the two names, use whatever format or system you have, but make your two nominations going forward for HRC on this task force. And then I'll be assigning the city council members as well.
Mayor Green, when would you like those names by?
If I could get them by Thursday afternoon, is that reasonable?
Well, we need to meet, I think, as a group.
Okay.
And when do we, Tony, when do we have our next meeting scheduled?
We're scheduled for Monday.
Okay. So if you can tell me by next Tuesday, that would be fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. And with that, then, that closes or ends our work session. And we are adjourned until 6:25-ish. How much time do you need, Denny?
About five minutes.
About five minutes. Okay, so time now, 6:27, so 6:27 is the time that we'll reconvene. So thank you very much, everyone.